I would like to call to order the May 20th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence for our invocation. Thank you. We'd like to welcome Sheila Bruce, our deputy clerk that's up front with us tonight. Our regular clerk, Lauren, I think is taking some vacation time, so welcome Sheila. Also, Commissioner Lin Shu has had a medical procedure, so he was unable to be here tonight, but he is online with us virtually. Can you speak, Commissioner Shu, to make sure you're on board with us? Okay, thank you. First up is the approval or correction of the minutes. You all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear any corrections or a motion to approve as presented? Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is approval of the agenda. You all have a copy of that before you as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up, in recognitions and presentations, we're happy to welcome Londa Strong from Active Living in Parks for a recognition tonight.
Thank you all for this opportunity. I don't know, some of you I know are aware, some may not be. The AARP tax program that takes place at the Concord Senior Center and has for, unfortunately, I can't tell you how many years. Might be something longer than me, I'm not sure, but they've been doing it for a long time. And this year, there were close to 800 participants that got their taxes done completely free. These volunteers, we wanted to recognize the volunteers. We provide the facility and do the scheduling for them. Other than that, it's them. And I'd like to bring Bob Garrity up here. He is the one that's in charge of over 21, or I guess it is 21 volunteers that he works with. And some of them are here, and I believe he wants them to speak as well.
Good evening. If Brian and Jerry will come up also. We have a leadership team of four that keep this organization going. I'm the local coordinator. Brian is our head instructor and our tax expert. Jerry Locke is responsible for computers, our security, software, record-keeping. And we have a fourth member who couldn't be with us tonight, Gloria Archer, who's one of our experienced tax preparers, and she does a lot of our research. Thank you, Londa and Teresa Kaiser, for their help in making the facilities available for us and especially for the help in doing all the client appointments. We really couldn't do it without your help. We thank you. As was said, we meet with clients at the Concord Senior Center. We meet them by appointment. We do this on Mondays and Wednesdays from the first Monday in February till Tax Day, which is April 15th. That's roughly 10 weeks. We do this all day. We start with our first clients at 8:30 in the morning, go till about 2:30 in the afternoon. During that time period, or each day, we try to see as many as 36 clients. And again, this is all by appointment. During this past tax season, we assisted approximately 725 to 750 clients. The average refund for those who got refunds was $1,054, average refund. That means that during this tax season, we brought back into the community $496,480 in refunds. Almost a half million dollars came back into the community through our clients and tax refunds. Brian?
Thank you again for allowing us to bring up the date, so to speak, on our program. As you can imagine, this money doesn't just fall out of the sky, coming from the government and everything. We bring in volunteers, complete volunteers, with a varied degree of background. We have tax people, such as myself. I came from a financial background. But we also have engineers. We have educators, administrative people, all types of people coming into our program as volunteers that it's our responsibility to make sure they understand, you know, the tax laws and how the AARP Foundation has set up our responsibilities. So we have, currently, we have 13 tax preparers. These are the ones that literally do the job of preparing the taxes. We spend about 30 hours in January, three days a week, refreshing their memory about what things need to be, how things need to be handled, I should say. In addition to that, we normally have anywhere from two to five individuals that join us each year as new volunteers. Many of them choose not to be tax preparers. They do the facilitation job, which is just as important, which is where the people come in and fill out the tax forms that we, or fill out the questionnaire that we then use to complete the taxes. They spend an additional 15 hours in December. So you can sort of start to feel that this is a job that is not taken very lightly. It's a job that they are very committed to. And that's one of the things I think we need to really be proud of, of our preparers. They make a commitment, not only for those hours I've talked about already, but you've got to understand, on top of that, they got homework assignment, for lack of a better thing, to call it. And they also have, excuse me, they also have tests that they have to take to guarantee that they are up to speed, so to speak, in the eyes of the AARP Tax Aid Foundation and also the IRS. So all of our tax preparers are certified by the IRS. And we spend a lot of time making sure that they are comfortable with what they're dealing with. And invariably, we can spend all of that month talking about how it's going to be easy the first three weeks, and it always turns out this year was an exact, a situation that was even worse than usual. The very first day we had somebody come in, we had a conference that we had to get together and talk about, hey, this is a little bit different. So that's one of the things we try to instill, too, is there's always somebody around that can help you with the problems that come in. Because there is almost not a typical tax preparer or a typical tax client. So we're proud of that. And we're proud of the work that we do with these volunteers, helping the clients that would come to us. Secondly, I want to bring to your attention, previously, when I'm talking about the certification, we're certified with IRS. As you can imagine, we also have a separate certification for the state of North Carolina. So we're good on both sides of the House in that situation. But as you can imagine, some people come in and they have returns that have to go to another state. Up until a couple of years ago, we were sort of handcuffed because, as you can imagine, we can't certify ourselves in the other 40-some or states that have tax income, income tax. What we've started, AARP, has started what they call a State Tax Assistance Program. And in that program, we can reach out, if we have somebody, say, from Virginia, which we did, we can reach out to Virginia, have somebody on site there, that they will call and talk to us, and we'll figure that out. Likewise, other states, one as far away as Oregon this year called us. We helped them with a North Carolina return. This year, we dealt with four states that we requested help on, and then we had another nine states, a total of 10 preparers or 10 clients, that we assisted with them. So we're very proud of that, as I say, up until the point that we had this program, we really had to turn them away and say, figure it out yourself. But now that we've got that, we're basically what, in the industry, when I was back working in the industry, we are now a one-and-done shop. We're proud of that, and we're really proud that we can help all of the people that come in to our site. And now I'll turn it over to Jerry.
Keep it brief.
Good evening. Besides the technical coordinator for all of the tax work, I'm also the technical coordinator for the AARP Property Tax Aid Foundation. I'm the representative for Concord. There's five of us across the state. We prepared 34 homestead exemptions for our tax, income tax clients. As they came through for income tax, we prepared the homestead exemption paperwork for them and submitted it to the tax office, or the property office over here, so that they could benefit from that, based on their income and their age. AARP has expanded it. They now have a national call center. Anybody can call in. They're advertising nationwide in the states that have exemptions for property tax. We've handled 42 requests across the state for homestead exemptions through AARP Foundation, on top of the 32 we already did, just based on our local county. So, you know, we're involved in a lot of different aspects, is tax aid, helping people with property tax and income tax. Thank you.
To reiterate, no charge for anything we do. We can't take any money. We can't take gifts. Everything is gratis. It is all supported by AARP Foundation, which is the benevolent side of AARP, with the assistance of Londa and Teresa and the Senior Center. So, thank you. That's what we do.
Great. Well, thank you very much. That is a tremendous service for the citizens of Cabarrus County, and it is truly appreciated and glad to be able to partner with Parks and Active Living.
Yeah, it's a great program, and they're being too modest. They come in year-round. Somebody calls them up and says, hey, I got a letter. And they come in and they take care of it. And like they were saying, they start early, and they go late. So it's, there's only a couple of months that we don't see them. And IT is great with keeping all of the computers going and the printers going and things that need to happen. And they're, they do a wonderful job, and we're glad. And if you think about 725 tax returns, $150 bucks is probably a nice figure that you would have to pay on the low side, I would think. So look how much money the citizens saved, in addition to what was brought back into the county. So we're glad that they're there, and as long as Bob is still there, we'll keep going. And then we have certificates and county pins for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and appreciate what you do for Cabarrus County residents.
It's our pleasure.
Okay, we move now to Memorial Day proclamation. We're happy to have Tony Miller with us, our Veteran Services Officer, to present that proclamation. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas our ancestors shaped the structure of the political system, laid the groundwork for higher diversity, discoveries in the science and medical research, started long-lasting traditions that enriched our heritage, and fought in wars so that future generations would have freedom. And whereas it is important to cherish the memories of our friends and family members who have died and to remember their contributions toward making our lives better. And whereas the veterans who fought and died for our country helped preserve the freedoms, rights guaranteed to all people under the U.S. Constitution. And whereas, on Memorial Day, Americans remember the enormous debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans who have lost their lives in the defense of freedom and the pursuit of peace. And we reflect on the past and renew our patriotism so that we may continue to live in freedom and seek peace to our veterans so that our veterans will not have died in vain. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize May 27th, 2024, as Memorial Day 2024 in Cabarrus County and urges all residents in the county to take this time on this special day of remembrance to honor those who have sacrificed and died to improve our quality of life and to strengthen our nation, adopted this 20th day of May 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
And while you're at the podium, I know that there are a variety of Memorial Day celebrations throughout the county and several of our municipalities. Do you have information on those that we can announce now?
I do not at this moment, but I can give that.
And we'll just encourage folks to check, check the newspaper or perhaps the county webpage, because there are several different opportunities.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt it as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes unanimously. We move now to informal public comments. I think that, and we experienced some issues last month during our public comments. It is my understanding that everyone that turned in a card tonight has received a copy of our public participation policy. If there is anyone who has not, if you'll please raise your hand, we will get one to you. I see one person with their hand raised on the back right. Okay, so public comments are for three minutes. Please address the podium, state your name and address. And our first card is from Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson. Tonight, I just want to talk about pain. Pain my family's felt that Cabarrus County inflicted on my family. You have toothache pain, it's bad. Heavy air ache pain. Have any kind of pain, it's bad at that moment, but it don't last like the pain that was inflicted on me by taking a helpless child up to get help. And what happened at the end, that they took her, my grandchild and her child away from her and broke her heart so bad that she never understood why, and she died. That pain lives on in my life, and it don't get better. There's nothing you can do about it. Can't go to the doctor. But I come up here to the board hoping that we got competent board members that sit here and listen and take note. Competent board members to fill our positions at Social Services with leadership and people, not just filling the seats, but filling them with people that should be there, that knows what they're doing. The people that I dealt with, one was new. She didn't even have a family. She come and told me that my family was bad evidently. But what I really want to talk about, too, I could talk about the hiding of evidence. I can talk about how it went off course. But I want to talk about emergency taking of my child. Now, what I figured after five months, the supervisor gave me a copy and said, this is, I shouldn't give it to you, but this is temporary custody of your children. And she had me sign it and had a witness and had Jeter sign it as a witness, my son. Now, I don't know nothing else about that, but I want to know, if DSS used that to come to my house on a Saturday night, use that form to take my child, oh, what did they use to take my child? What lie did they use to take my child? And I can't get that answer up here. I can't get that answer. I can get all kind of answers, but I can't get that answer. That would be an answer worth knowing. What lie was told? Because my child was fine. DSS workers called me two times that week, and I was at the hospital with my sister. And I told them I was up there, and I couldn't hear because of the machines. They said, where's Erica? I said, in the hospital, in the hospital. Regardless, they took my child. I want to know why on that emergency.
Okay, our next card is from Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson. I'm up here tonight to talk about the Cabarrus crucifix of Erica Anderson. And it went a whole lot, being run through a court system with a prosecutor and a judge that been together in the law firm and knew each other outside. And when that goes on, you're not going to get a fair trial in Cabarrus County. And I know y'all don't care because you don't have nothing to do with the court system. That's okay. I'm just letting you know. And letting everybody else know that's in here. You get a, get the DSS prosecutor and the right judge, you're not, it's not going to go good. But anyway, it's really sad what had happened to her. Mentally ill, seeking help, and she doesn't get it. The county manager writes me a note and says, competent adult. Never has she been a competent adult. Maybe that's why she died. And I'm really up here for this veteran. This veteran should be treated better in our county. I mean, we, he can't get answers, and it's not because he's not asking. It's because there was a door that was shut and locked on him. And that's something you don't do to somebody when they're asking questions, unless you've got something to hide. When you're hiding something, you lock a door. And the door's been locked and never opened, and he's up here asking questions. Why'd you take a child on an emergency order from his house? You know, you took it from competent adults. Nobody went to jail. If somebody did something to this child, they should have went to jail. But nobody went to jail on this matter. You got people that did stuff to their kids and went to jail. You know? What do we do to have this child removed besides they want her so bad? So bad that somebody got hurt. They died because of your legal team, sir. Because of your legal team here. And you know what I'm talking about, how nobody can get a lawyer because he's so powerful. No lawyer wants to go against him. If he can get a lawyer, get me a lawyer to go against him. Tell me who. Point me in that direction. I need a lawyer to fight your legal team, man. They're too powerful. They're cheating. It's cheating. It's not right, and somebody died because of it, man, and you should be a little more concerned about that. She was called a competent adult. You written it yourself. Did you take her title? She was incompetent. Did you take that title? I'm asking you a question, because her title disappeared, and I think you took it shutting your doors and locking it. And you're just playing around with that title. Change your title up there to county manager incompetent, because she stole it. And her parental rights wasn't taken. She didn't have any. Her mental rights was just taken. Just taken. No lawyers, no lawyers whatsoever. No show Cynthia Everson. Man, you got to do something with this legal team.
Okay, our next card is from Amy Palacios.
Amy Palacios. I'm from Harrisburg, North Carolina. I'm here to talk about ethics and conflict. We're concerned about the DSS contract and this option two and the cost that it's costing the Cabarrus County and causing more money, more conflict. I personally had to spend $150,000 in the last year and a half to pay my abusers and Jay White's law firm. It's continually happening, and I don't know why we're keeping him on the contract for another year. He shouldn't be over children. He shouldn't be over, he shouldn't, he, he's over criminals, and he should stay over criminals, not be able to be over children also. He's defending criminals in the criminal court. And in a six-month period of time, under Jay White, I was given an order to pay child support, $2,800 a month for my first four children that I have joint custody with. And then $70,000 equitable distribution to the, my ex-husband that beat me up and was in jail for six months and has two criminal convictions of assault on a female, and the other $30,000 to Jay White himself. I paid everything except for the last $10,000. And I'm presenting that check now so that it's evident in the court that upon protest, H. Jay White is being paid his last $10,000. We want human trafficking to be ended in Cabarrus County. There's obviously a problem with human trafficking, or you wouldn't have a human trafficking task force. You've acknowledged that there's a problem if you have a task force. And so through these ex parte orders and DSS orders, we're asking for opportunity for justice, for fair trial, allowed to present evidence, like her evidence that was withheld. My ex-husband's criminal convictions and mental health records were withheld from the court because Jay White would not allow them as evidence. Those kinds of things don't need to be happening. And again, we need fair trial in front of judges that are not taking favor with Jay White, people like Kristi Willam and Judge Knutts. The same judge, Judge Knutts, gave me an order to pay $70,000 to the man that beat me up and was in jail for six months. Judge Knutts was on stand during my domestic violence trial. He was the judge that, he sat in his orange jumpsuit and threatened to kill me on the stand. But yet, a year later, I was given an order to pay him.
Okay, our next card is from Amy Betts.
Hello, my name is Amy. I'm the founder of Adelys, and I'm an advocate for biological parents and their children. The family court industry is failing children. They are being trafficked for profit, and it's happening across the United States and North Carolina. Cabarrus County is also part of these RICO crimes. One way they profit is under Title IV of the Social Security Act. States are claiming federal reimbursement for the cost of providing foster care and adoption for children who meet their criteria. And the states and local government are profiting from the state funding, approximately $800 per month per child. Laws and policies must protect the rights of the people, but in this industry, they're being used to violate rights. I think it was important when the gentleman spoke about Memorial Day proclamation and how we owe our debt to veterans. However, I think that the American citizens would be ashamed to know that this family court industry is actually harming veterans and separating them from their children, as Mr. Anderson discussed. And they're separating them from their grandchildren. Systemic discrimination has been proven in this system when separating families. Children are aging out with an irreparable amount of harm being created to them and their biological parents by the system. We're watching this unfold in Georgia and other parts of the United States. Right now, you can Google "North Carolina", and you can look up the recent convictions in Cherokee County. So one solution we could look at, audits in Cabarrus County in these courts. The industry funding must be limited. We need ethics standards to these public servants that are in positions of power. With a code of ethics, that's enforceable. That's just one thing that I have, along with a list of others. But I think that this commission definitely could look at the funding initiatives and different ways to take funding from the Department of Health and Human and different ways to take funding from the Department of Health and Human Services. And I believe you could help fund your Department of Education with that money. I have a lot more to say, but that's it for today. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from Rick Hofforth.
Good evening. Rick Hofforth, 6000 Creekview Court in Harrisburg. Want to speak again this evening about affordable housing and the crisis that we have about it in Cabarrus County. One of the most important things I wanted to share tonight is about the type of fund that we're asking the commission to create. And that is an Affordable Housing Investment Fund. And one of the, one of the main things about this type of fund is that it takes a municipality or a county to act first. And what I mean by that is that in conversations in the community between last month's meeting and tonight, I've had a few people say, well, can private corporations, businesses contribute to this? And the answer is yes. You know, we even had one person mention Eli Lilly building, you know, the great big facility here. And it would be, you know, it would help them as an employer to be involved in helping us to provide affordable housing. But the main thing I want you to know tonight is that the county commission has to act first. Because this is done either as municipality or county. And it's done nonprofit and not by for-profit. So that's the main thing. You're going to hear more from other down-home members tonight. But we need you to act to help end this crisis. Thank you.
Okay, next is Teresa Belucy.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Belucy, 11270 Hickory Ridge Road, Harrisburg. When I graduated college in 2002, I moved back home with my parents because as a first-year teacher, I could not afford really to live anywhere else. Fast forward 20 years, two years ago, I had a student teacher. She was in an apartment, had two roommates, was living. One of them got engaged, moved out. They could no longer afford to live there. So she moved in, back in with her parents. This is 20 years later. I have, I'm a product of Cabarrus County schools. And I am a veteran teacher, 21 years of Cabarrus County schools. And I can tell you now that I can't afford to live in Cabarrus County anymore. If I had not, thank you, Jesus, inherited my parents' house to live in, in Harrisburg, I don't know where I would be living. And I don't know that it would be in Cabarrus County. There is absolutely no affordable housing. I went around my school today just asking some of our first-year teachers what their living situations were. And three first-year teachers are, have roommate situations where they're in an apartment with their roommate. One lives alone, but she works two jobs. As of, I've heard my entire 20-year career in Cabarrus County schools is that teachers have to work multiple jobs to be able to pay their bills and to live. And I'm sorry, that is horrible. It's not acceptable and it shouldn't be acceptable. I love Cabarrus County. I love Harrisburg. I loved it more when tractors went down the road more often and it was more rural. Now, all my cow pastures are subdivisions and housing developments that none of my neighbors could ever afford. It's just what's happening in our county and it's breaking my heart. The other thing I'm concerned about is a couple of our first-year teachers. You know, I know that there are things put in place to help them. There's down payment assistance and things like that. But a first-year teacher, now that this county does not offer a job guarantee, they get a contract for one year. And at the end of that year, they have no idea if they're going to have a job the next year. Several of ours don't this year. The realignment changed some things. We lost some students. So three of our teachers, the last hires, were told, you know, a little over a month ago, sorry, you don't have a job next year. And I just think that we need to do something dramatic to bring affordable housing back to Cabarrus County. Thank you.
And next is Sabrina Berry.
Good evening, commissioners. I won't echo everything you're going to hear from our Cavco down-home members. But I think each and every one of you know that housing is not a privilege. It is a fundamental right. And I stand before you asking that you approve our one new fund and give all of our citizens safe, affordable, and inclusive housing. It's time to put people over politics. And I ask that you do that. Thank you and God bless you. Heaven smile upon you.
Okay, next is Kim Luter.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Dr. Kim Sexton Luter. And I am a resident of Kannapolis where I've lived for the past 18 years. I believe my address is on the form already. So I'm going to refrain from reciting it now. I will begin my remarks by emphasizing a lot of what you have already heard this evening. Cabarrus County is in a housing crisis. We have townhomes being developed in this county starting at $300,000. Townhomes. We have apartment buildings where the base rent is $2,100 a month. We have three, three tent cities in this county. Three. People are literally having to create homes out of tents because they do not have any other affordable options. We have over 1,000 homeless children in this county because there is nowhere for their parents to go. I've seen people who have lived here their entire lives, their entire lives, have to make the hard decision to leave because they simply cannot afford to live in Cabarrus County anymore. As commissioners, it's up to you. It's up to you to present and make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents who live here. I urge you to do just that. We have brought you a solution. We've been here two months now and we're sharing those solutions with you. Now it is your time to act on it. Every person deserves a safe, adequate, and affordable place to live. The power to do something is, for the people of this county, lies with you. Tonight, I just petition you. Do something great. Do something great for the people of Cabarrus County.
Okay, next is Misty Porter. Mr. Porter.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Porter, I've been living in District 11 for 18 years. I work as a tradesman. And at the time that I've lived here, I realized that my first apartment was maybe $425 for a property duplex. And between 2012 and 2020, the rent only went up to maybe $800 bucks, which is represented 7%, 8% growth. And then houses in my mother's neighborhood experienced the same growth. But since 2020, there's been a lot of private investment from real estate investment trusts that increased the year-over-year to about 23%, 24%, respectively. So I guess my request would be that perhaps we can do something to rein that monopoly in a bit, as well as expand the crisis assistance, the budget for the crisis assistance program that we have. And even perhaps for new builds and apartment units and multifamilies, have a mandatory percentage of those apartments that are income-based. Yes, and also on August 22 of 2023, there's a bridge in District 11 on Lincoln Street that has been out of commission and it resulted in children not getting access to life-saving measures, i.e. fire trucks. And they ended up being burned alive in the district. And I feel like that's something that maybe we could work towards or find a little bit of room in the budget. Because it's pretty shameful that we have brand-new fire trucks, but not the roads to save lives with them. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next is Malaysia Belmer.
Hi, my name's Malaysia. I'm nine years old. I am in the third grade. I'm speaking up here to say, to say I need a better and safer place to live. The house I am in now is not comfortable and it does not feel like a home at all. Every day, I cannot see how, I can see how much it affects my mom. I really do well in school because I love learning and I know it makes my mom proud. But I can still see how sad she is sometimes. Where we live are now makes her really sad and stressed out and makes me worry about her. I would really like my own room and space that I can call my own decor. It's really important that these more affordable places to live here so that people can live better lives. I want a better life for me, my mom, my sister, and me. Thank you.
Okay, next is Tamara Ford. Tamika.
It's Tamika.
I apologize.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Hi, Mr. Dance. I am not a very good public speaker at all. I, as a matter of fact, I don't even stand up in front of people to speak, but I'm going to do my best tonight. I just want to say that I'm truly grateful to be given this opportunity to attend and speak at my very first county commissioners meeting. I'd like to give a special thanks to our regional organizer, Ms. Jasmine Luter, for taking my housing concerns seriously and for being patient with me as I grow into this space. My name is, well, my name is Tamika Ford. I'm a Concord resident. I've been living here for most of my life. I have two daughters, ages nine and 10 years old. I've personally been affected by the housing crisis here in Cabarrus County. I'm living in a situation that I don't want to be in. It is a very, very uncomfortable environment for me, for myself, and my children. I have tried many times to get out of this situation. I have applied at many different places with no luck. The one place I was offered, the only place that I was offered was not up to code, was not up to housing code and was unsafe living conditions. One week after turning down this apartment, those two children died in that fire. This has affected my quality of life. And I'm feeling like I have no options for safe and affordable housing. I sit in my bed many nights and cry, contemplating moving to a different city. The reason this is so near and dear to my heart is because my girls attend an international school. They are honor roll students. They have made honor roll students, I mean, they have been honor roll students every year. No disciplinary actions against neither one of these children. They love, they love and they have very good relationships with all of their teachers since they've been in school. So that's one of the reasons why I don't want to move them because it's very important for them to have consistency. But I will do what I have to do. And I wanted to come and show my children that I wanted to leave no stone left until, before I have to take them. So including this, if you guys could include this one funding in the budget, it would be very important to ensure safe, decent, and affordable housing for myself and my children. And I wanted to say one more thing. I also adopted a motto that's very profound to me. I adopted this from a guy named Greg Jackson at a, it's called, I think his campus is called Hill Charlotte Community Campus. And it's just, really just as easy and simple. But it says, "If everybody does a little, nobody has to do a lot." So if everybody kind of does their part, you know, like you guys do your part, our organizations do their part, our residents do their part, then we can make impact within Cabarrus County. So I just want to thank you.
Okay, next is May Mack.
Hello, commissioners. First, I want to say thank you to each of you that have given time over the last few weeks for meetings, emails, and general conversation about how we can work to address the affordable housing crisis here in Cabarrus County. I'm incredibly grateful to have a board that recognizes housing as an issue and is interested in how we can innovatively craft solutions to help our local community. Today, I am here again to advocate for nonprofit, permanently affordable housing. Since the Great Recession, we have witnessed a phenomenon never before seen in the United States. And that is private equity firms targeting housing as an investment vehicle to generate profits for stakeholders. During COVID, this trend only accelerated. And it is now estimated that if current trends continue, giant corporations will own 40% of all rental properties by 2030. They purchase homes with cash offers, thousands of dollars over asking price, often sight unseen, serving to outcompete traditional home buyers and quickly pushing the American dream of homeownership out of reach for even middle-class families. Research shows that these companies target value-add properties, meaning those that are typically starter homes, that are then being removed from the market and rented back out to us at astronomical prices. So what is the problem? That we are in the midst of a corporate takeover of our housing. Now, what is the solution? Permanently affordable, community-operated, nonprofit housing. Relying on for-profit entities to provide affordable housing is contradictory because they are explicitly designed to extract profit. Instead, we have the opportunity to take back control of our housing by empowering mission-aligned entities that use shared equity models, similar to the Local Community Land Trust, to be able to create and preserve affordable housing for our community. The most direct and efficient way that we can promote this here locally is to provide upfront capital. By creating a revolving low-interest loan account available for permanently affordable housing, we can proactively increase affordable housing stock here in Cabarrus County. It is revolving because payments made on the loan go directly back into the account to fund future projects. Our request is for one new fund to provide many new homes. Please, commissioners. Please, Commissioners, I am begging you to please act now to address the number-one issue in Cabarrus County: affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, next is Patrick Graham.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and everyone in the dais. My name is Patrick Graham, and I am the CEO of We Build Concord. This evening, I come to speak in support of a revolving fund for affordable housing, particularly for construction. We already know that forty-nine percent of renters here in this county already report that they cannot afford to live and pay rent in their homes. We also know that home sales in North Carolina have increased by sixty-three point four percent from January 2019 through this past December of 2023. We also know, according to Bureau of Labor Statistics, that prices for construction have inflated by nineteen point six percent. So what this revolving construction fund will do is it will help to deal with those upfront costs of construction, and through sales and rent, will actually be placed back into the revolving account. It allows you to have dollars that literally replicate themselves over time consistently, so that one dollar given today actually will still be at work ten years from now. It also allows you to serve as the beginning of a fund that private investment foundation and others can contribute to. Now, I know this can work, because I have done it with dollars you have given me already. Through the American Rescue Plan, the five million-dollar grant that we have from you will now be projected to convert into eighty-six units. We were able to first take those dollars and place them into ownership first, and then we took those dollars that were earned from sales, and we placed them back into projects for rent. Now, the only difference between what we're doing now and what we've done with ARPA is that ARPA actually has an end date of December 2026, and it forces you to have to spin down or give money back to the Treasury. So you can't use it as a revolving account. But this could be the start of something new, a revolving account that does a couple of things. One, every dollar leveraged can be multiplied across several projects. It'll be beneficial for one-time and continuous donations and investments for affordable and workforce housing. And last thing that it'll do is that it will actually provide more opportunities for both ownership and affordable rents to individuals in this county. With your ARPA dollars, people have already saved twenty-seven percent on rent or mortgages through your program. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wesley Honeycutt.
I wanted to share a couple of quotes from some meetings in April and talk through those. At the April 18 Board of Commissioners Work Session, Commissioner Lynn Schu said, in regards to discussion about the closure of Beverly Hills School, "There's a lot of counties in North Carolina that are in a whole lot worse shape than we are." Cabarrus County is a very wealthy county, and I think we can afford to do better than those counties that can't afford to do better. Counties that can afford to do better, their schools are like Beverly Hills. They're old, dilapidated, they don't have the money, and they close them down, or they combine them and all that. I agree with Commissioner Fur that it was the right decision to close Beverly Hills, and he went on to say, "Cabarrus County deserves better, and I think we can do better, and we should do better." A few days later, at the April 22 Board of Education Legislative Agenda Meeting, the CFO of Cabarrus County Schools said the following, "Cabarrus County is widely perceived as wealthy, or at least well-resourced. Yet, in speaking engagements that I've had around our county recently about the budget, members of the audience were very surprised to learn that we have over seven hundred students experiencing homelessness. Some staff members who work with our homeless student population feel that population is drastically understated, and the number is probably closer to a thousand students. Almost half of our students, more than seventeen thousand kids, are eligible for free and reduced-price benefits in our school nutrition program, and one-third of our schools are eligible for Title I funds, because the free and reduced populations within those schools are so large. All of that suggests to me that there's a deep undercurrent of need that current funding formulas don't acknowledge or address." That's the end of his quote. So my question to you all is, do you all understand what your constituents are going through? Everyone doesn't live downtown Concord and Harrisburg life. If you don't recognize that, maybe that's why you can't fathom the dissent from people like me who continue to speak out against higher taxes. And I'm not here for me, I'm here for other people. Thankfully, we're doing all right. I listened to the budget meetings where things were requested, such as four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for iPads for third through fifth graders, and eighty thousand dollars for band uniforms for one school, while many of your constituents are struggling to pay for utilities, increased food prices, fuel, et cetera. Does it make sense to steal tax dollars from those who are struggling with those things and barely getting by to fund things such as those that I just mentioned? The government buildings and schools being built are nicer than what ninety-nine percent of taxpayers live in. Does this make sense? See, I look back over the past few years, and what I've seen is a whole lot of government help. They helped us with stimulus money and PPP loans. And you notice the stats of the gentleman who spoke before me about how much things have gone up because of all that money injected into the economy. See, I think you all believe that a bigger government, a bigger budget is the sign of success, but the reality is that where government grows, freedom dies.
Okay, that concludes all of the cards that we have tonight, and so we move now to old business. We have one item from EMS, renewal of non-emergency transport franchise agreement with American TransMed, and we're happy to have Justin Brons with us to speak to that.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the viewing audience and those who may not understand, this franchise ordinance is for non-emergency transport within the county. Cabarrus County EMS does handle all 911 and emergent advanced-level life support calls. This is for wheelchair transport, stretcher transport, to and from doctor's appointments, discharges from nursing homes, that kind of thing. This takes trucks that can do that and allows us to be able to provide emergency service better. This is the second reading of the ordinance to be renewed. Whereas Cabarrus County regulates the provision of vehicles for hire in Article 82 of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances and North Carolina General Statute 153A 250, including franchises for non-emergency ambulance services. And whereas those services have been provided by American TransMed according to the standards defined in Section 82-52 of the ordinance, and whereas the Board of Commissioners have held a hearing as required by Section 82-53 of the ordinance. And whereas, based on information submitted by American TransMed and information submitted at the hearing, the Board of Commissioners made the following findings. The public necessity and convenience requires the proposed ambulance service. Each such ambulance and its required equipment have been certified by the state as acceptable for the type of franchise requested. American TransMed and its officers or partners are responsible persons to conduct or work in the proposed business. Only duly-certified emergency medical technicians are employed as operators and attendants by American TransMed for the non-emergency service franchise. All other requirements of Article 82 and all other applicable laws and ordinances have been met. Now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners resolves that the Board of Commissioners grants a franchise to American TransMed for the operation of non-emergency ambulance service for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. The terms of this franchise shall include the following. The geographic boundary for the franchise shall be the entirety of the county. Any change in ownership or management of American TransMed shall terminate the franchise and shall require a new application and new franchise award. The franchise may not be sold, assigned, mortgaged, or otherwise transferred without approval of the county and a finding of conformance with all requirements of Article 82. The terms of Section 8257 of the ordinance shall be included in the franchise agreement as they relate to termination, suspension, or revocation. And finally, the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the franchise agreement with American TransMed, not inconsistent with this ordinance after drafting, interviewed by the county attorney. Approved after readings in two consecutive regular meetings, the Board of Commissioners on April 15, 2024, and today, May 20, 2024 pursuant to the General Statute of North Carolina 153A-46. Are there any questions?
Questions for Justin? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, you've heard the resolution, and so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution granting a franchise to operate non-emergency ambulance service to American TransMed after review and revision by the county attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have our consent agenda. I think there are twenty items on that list tonight. All of these are items that have been discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. Our one item of new business tonight is presentation of the fiscal year 25 recommended budget, and I will turn the microphone over to County Manager Mike Downs for that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of the year staff has prepared, began back in October of last year, to start the budget process for this year. So after several months and a lot of hard work, a lot of conversations, the budget has been prepared, the preliminary budget, for your consideration. So I would like to pass on and introduce that budget to you. So, good evening, Honorable Chairman and members of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. It is my honor and privilege to submit the FY25 recommended budget and community investment capital fund investments. The recommendation reduces the tax rate, the current tax rate, to sixty cents. That's a fourteen-cent decrease in the tax rate, and per one, so sixty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, again, which is a fourteen-cent reduction. With that, owners of a three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-dollar house, which is now the median single-family assessed home value in Cabarrus County as of the 2024 revaluation, would pay approximately twenty-one hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year in county property tax. At the recommended tax rate, the county can sustain services, many of which are state-mandated and make critical investments in staff, capital, and other needs. Analysis that shows short of an economic downturn, this rate should be sustainable and provide a degree of certainty for taxpayers over the next four years. The recommended general fund budget totals three hundred and ninety-one million dollars, which is an increase of fifteen percent from last year. The budget also supports continued capital investments through the community investment funds. Across all funds, including those supported by user fees, and the FY25 budget totals five hundred and ten million dollars. Results of the county's evaluation were prominent during the discussions of this ensuing budget. The process is dictated by state law with minimal local control. Revaluations must occur at least every eight years, but the state can direct compliance sooner if values fall or rise more than fifteen percent from the going-market rate. Values established in January 1st of 2020 were determined to be more than fifteen percent lower than the market value rates of 2022. That would have required a revaluation no later than January 1st of 2025. Faced with this, the county followed the board policy and maintained the four-year revaluation cycle as recommended by the Department of Revenue. The new appraised values reflect the fair market real estate value as of January 1st, 2024. New real property valuations totaled forty point seven billion dollars, up fifty-six percent from the prior year. When the personal property, public service companies, and motor vehicles are included, the county's estimated valuation for FY25 totals forty-seven billion dollars. Based on these valuations, the total general fund property tax levy for FY25 is two hundred and eighty million dollars, which is up nineteen percent from FY24. The valuation increase is consistent with recent statewide trends. Although increases can cause sticker shock, data shows that the results are not an outlier nor inconsistent with the current market conditions. With appeals ongoing, these valuations reflect our best current estimates. Tax Administrator David Thrift and his team did a terrific job providing conservative figures. However, appeals create considerable uncertainty. Staff will continue to monitor the appeals process and bring forward changes prior to the adoption of the budget in June. The other key aspect of revaluation is the requirement to calculate and publish a revenue-neutral tax rate. Based on our calculations, that rate is fifty-two point six five cents per one hundred dollar value. Staff concluded this rate would negatively impact operations and not be sustainable over the next five years. A revenue tax rate is not recommended, as going revenue-neutral would produce a deficit of approximately twenty-two point eight million dollars for fiscal year 25, requiring substantial budget reductions. Looking only at the revenue needed to balance the FY25 budget, the lowest possible tax rate without spending cuts would be fifty-seven point six cents per one hundred dollar valuation, approximately five cents above the revenue-neutral. Adopting a budget at this rate is an option, but would likely produce deficits starting in FY26. The local and national economic outlook also informed development of the recommended budget. County's population continues to grow, and revenues have increased due to higher property values and increased sales tax collections. That growth, however, comes with expenses to sustain services. The county has experienced significant growth in the school-age population. Nearly a quarter of our population is under age of eighteen. This increases funding needs for school facilities. Labor market conditions and competition necessitated substantial wage and benefit increases, which greatly impacted our budget. If these conditions persist, the county should continue to invest in our employees or potentially fall behind in recruiting and retaining high performers. Another key aspect of the budget development was understanding prior investments and evaluating the effectiveness of county programs. During FY24, the board continued to make significant investments in our dedicated workforce. These commitments have drastically reduced turnover. Last year, our turnover rate exceeded twenty percent across the organization, and in some departments, topping fifty percent. As of February 2024, the turnover rate now was down to ten percent, which reflects the county's positioning as an employer of choice. Data compiled over the past year, however, shows that further employee-based investments are necessary to meet service demands. The Department of Social Services continues to experience significant turnover and must always remain compliant with state and federal guidelines. Failure to remain compliant can result in significant financial penalties or even take over by the state of the program or the entire department. Food and nutrition services timeliness has consistently fallen below the required goal of at least ninety-five percent of applications being processed within the established timeframes, while the average number of monthly applications increased by thirty-five percent, and recertifications rose two hundred and thirty-four percent over the last. and recertifications rose two hundred and thirty-four percent over the last, over the past year. Similarly, child welfare continues to face increased demand for services and staffing shortages. The recommended budget adds ten new positions for DSS. Fortunately, the cost of these positions will be significantly offset by state and federal revenues received by the department. The largest new expense in the FY twenty-five budget, significant increases to public safety salaries. This was approved, these, these increases were approved, thankfully unanimously by our board in March of twenty twenty-four. This was much needed. That added a ten million, ten point six million dollars of expense for FY twenty-five, and that, that amount will continue to grow each year through cost of living adjustments, merit increases, and future market adjustments. These increases recognize the valuable contributions of our Sheriff's Office, our EMS department, our fire services, and our emergency management professionals. That, they work very tirelessly to protect our residents and visitors. More importantly, the new salaries are competitive and will improve recruitment and retention. The FY twenty-five budget also funds eight new positions for EMS to, to allow us to place a fourteenth ambulance in service, improving our current response times and reducing standby coverage needs. Finally, our public safety personnel must have the training, equipment, and tools needed to be effective. The budget funds a new armored van and armored truck for the Sheriff's Office, special response teams, to enhance incident response capabilities. The budget also adds a simulation technical specialist and a logistics specialist for EMS to enhance in-house training and manage distribution of medical supplies, equipment, and other items. Also for the Sheriff's Office, the budget adds one deputy to provide security at the Concord Library, and that's the downtown branch. Educational needs. Cabarrus County Schools submitted their largest budget request in recent memory. Overall, the Cabarrus County School System operating budget increases to ninety point two million, which is an eight point five million dollars over the FY twenty-four budget. Additional, and that funding is, is from the county, that is not their total budget. Additional funding will cover increased costs for personnel, including salaries, certified teacher supplements, and benefits. In addition, funding would cover inflation and enrollment related to cost increases for instructional purposes, staff training, building maintenance, technology improvements, and replacements. While Cabarrus County Schools' increases are substantial, they fall short of what the district actually requested. Although many requests are reasonable and important, recommendation was not possible given the board's desire to work towards adopting the lowest possible tax rate while maintaining our adequate services. Funding these items requires the adoption, would, would, would require the adoption, excuse me, of a higher tax rate or, or pending spending cuts. Kannapolis City Schools' operating budget increases to just under ten point five million. And again, that's Cabarrus County's contribution. Up to one point one six million, or eleven point one six million for FY twenty-four. This covers increased costs for salaries, certified supplements, and benefits. The county is also required to provide equal per pupil fund, excuse me, per pupil funding for students attending charter schools. Charter enrollment is estimated to be thirty-three hundred and fifty-six students for the fiscal, or for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. This results in funding to CCS and KCS of just over seven point million dollars, with an additional one point two million held in board contingency. Should the, should the charter school enrollment meet or exceed the current projections. Rowan Cabarrus Community College is a vital, is vital in the local workforce and the economic development process, with two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars of income added to the local economy each year. Additional funding for salary and benefit increases and utilities are included in this budget. This results in a total funding of four point six million, up six point two percent from the prior year. Capital projects. As part of the FY twenty-four budget, the board approved new financing for thirteen projects totaling an estimated of a hundred and eighty million dollars. Projects included the public safety training facility, the relocation of our Department of Social Services, from, and that's in the process, and several education projects. Given market conditions, the debt issuance was delayed until fiscal year twenty-five to address changing needs in the economy. Most significantly, we received nearly one billion dollars of capital requests from the Cabarrus County Schools to address their projected enrollment growth over the next decade. We also identified shortfalls for a variety of projects. Responding to these changes requires an additional hundred and seventy million for a total financing of three hundred and fifty million. The added funding will allow Cabarrus County Schools to construct two elementary schools that would open in August of twenty twenty-six. An additional fifty-four million would be allocated to Rowan Community, Rowan Cabarrus Community College for the construction of a new workforce innovation center. It is proposed to be a state-of-the-art workforce facility and would enhance their workforce development efforts, which in turn benefits the county through associated economic impact for employers and workers. Those funds would also be used for substantial renovations to their building S two oh one, and that's on their south campus. The balance of the additional funding will go towards closing the gaps for approved projects, including the twenty million dollar shortfall for the county's regional behavior health center. The county received thirty-two point five million for the state, from the state, for this critical project, but overall budget delivered a full scope of fifty-five million. Board action is, will be requested in June to authorize these projects for construction period financing with the conversion to a twenty-year fixed debt in twenty twenty-six. Although the total July twenty-four debt issuance is substantial, the proposed plan funds these projects without impacting the FY twenty-five tax rate. Based on current assumptions, that is the only possible, that is only possible by limiting future debt issuance to no more than sixty million in each of the next two-year cycles. Funding additional school projects in FY twenty-seven and beyond would require an increased tax rate or significantly reduced spending. Two primary options are available to address Cabarrus County's, schools' capital needs beyond this year. First, the board could authorize a bond referendum to be held in March of twenty-six, allowing voters to decide whether to fund the remaining projects on the capital plan. If they approved, if approved, the county would have the authority to adopt a tax rate sufficient to cover the cost of the new debt. If rejected, the projects would be delayed a minimum of two years, potentially resulting in further capacity challenges and increased project cost. Secondly, rather than conducting a bond referendum, the board could adopt the budget with the approximate, or with an appropriate tax rate to fund the remainder of the Cabarrus County Schools' capital plan through non-voter-approved debt. Either option would address the student growth coming over the next decade and have an undeniable impact on taxpayers. This is significant, this is a significant policy discussion the board must have in the coming months and years. In addition to debt finance projects, the budget allocates twenty-seven point six million of cash reserves to meet other capital needs. The use of cash reserves for, for less expensive projects, known as pay-as-you-go, allows projects to be completed without adding any borrowing cost. Adoption of the capital project ordinance for these projects is planned for June seventeenth of June, or June seventeenth at our regular meeting. As part of the annual budget process, staff develops a conservative five-year plan that illustrates how revenues and expenditures expect to change. Larger annual increases are forecast for education partners of approximately four point five percent, and the cost of the county's staffing at six percent, while smaller increases are projected for general operating expenses of three percent and the Cabarrus Health Alliance of three percent. The plan forecasts average revenue growth of about two percent annually, annually. Property tax is the most significant revenue source and is projected to grow at about, about three percent each year. The second-largest revenue source is sales tax, which is projected to grow about one percent annually. Based on these projections, the recommended tax rate would generate a total surplus of fifteen million dollars for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. These funds would cover the total projected shortfall of fifteen million dollars in FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight. Unless out, unless outside factors intervene, this would enable the county to maintain the tax rate until the next revaluation. Regarding the next, excuse me, regarding the next revaluation, a deficit of nineteen point seven million is forecasted for FY twenty-nine when revaluation will go into effect. The five-year plan only assumes typical property tax revenue growth and not increased revenues for, from the revaluation. Whether or not additional revenue is realized will be a decision of a future board. In closing, I want to thank you and our team members for their dedication and unmatched customer service, which makes Cabarrus County such a special place. Many team members contributed to the development of this budget, responsive to community needs, including Dr. Elise Pugh, Kelly Siffert, Lundie Covington, Raj Kotri, Yessenia Panida, Sophia Politis, Jim Howden, Suzanne Burgess, and department heads and leadership throughout the county. I also commend the board for your leadership, your dedication to our citizens, and it is appreciated by staff, county partners, and the citizens themselves. We look forward to your thoughtful consideration of the recommended budget and input from the residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we have, we now have the ability to view for the public, to view the budget online and actually can work through the process. So if, I'm going to call up Yessenia Panida to come up and show you that for just a few minutes and show you how to work through the, through the website, county website, and so that you can pull up the information that you would like to look at in more detail.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. I am going to walk you all and hopefully anyone watching in the public through our online budget book. So the best place to start is at the county website. There's going to be a couple of different places to find our book, but the tried and true one is to go to the government tab, departments, budget and evaluation, and you'll be on the budget page. From there, you can see the FY twenty-five recommended budget here. That will then link you to the online version of our, of our budget book. So here you can see an extended version of a couple of different things. You can see an extended version of the budget message, which Mike just read, if I can find it here, as well as get a little bit more interactive with your graphs and charts. So here's the budget message I was referencing, you can scroll through that. Also different from last year, we have these tiles across the top that you can use to navigate the book. So if you were looking for the expenditure section, you could navigate across the top. And this is different from the paper copies you have in front of you because you can really drill down into these reports. To do that, I will scroll through all of this to get to the department view. If you click that view report hyperlink, it will take you to a new tab. From here, you can see anything you like. So if you scroll, you'll get to some filters. So if you are curious, this is the view that's in the actual budget book, but if you really wanted to drill down into a particular department, I will use budget as an example. You can see, first of all, that this is the budget, but this doesn't get you the interesting stuff. You can also, in this filters tab, break it down by your expense type, and expand and drill down and so forth. So you can do this for any of the reports that we have in the book. And a note that I always like to say is that you can't break this page. All of our views are already saved in the book, you can't change them or mess with them in any way. So feel free to click around, you can download somewhere around here, download the actual spreadsheet if you want to mess with this in Excel, you can refresh to get back to the original view that this was in. So this is the budget book for drilling down. I will also point out that we have a bunch of different languages that you can change the book into instantly. So if we just do that, all of a sudden, you can read it. So this, I think, is a really cool accessibility tool to, anyone can access the budget book in any language they'd like to see it in. And I think that is it for the budget presentation. Any questions about navigating the online budget book that you guys would like to ask?
The only question I have is, whenever it was mentioned, maybe it was one of the workshop meetings or budget meeting, that within this, being able to dive deeper into the budget, there was going to be a kind of a receipt option, where you would be able to see exactly how much, what you're paying is going to, to each budget item, is that?
That is still a work in progress. We will have that up and running hopefully soon. And we will link that on the budget website, that, the original budget website that I was at, it won't probably be in the online budget book, I guess. Any other questions about navigating our online budget book? All righty, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. Now I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Yessenia. I'm sure that if, if anybody has issues with the, the online budget on the webpage, there, there are folks here, you can call in and get assistance with that. There are also printed copies here at the governmental center that folks can come in if you would prefer to browse through those. For just an FYI, they gave us our printed copies as we walked in the room tonight. So, so we're seeing this for the first time as well. And so we now have an opportunity to go back, just as you do, to study the individual aspects of the budget. And we encourage, we encourage all of you to do that. One other business that, that the board needs to conduct tonight is our regular work session meeting for June will be on June the third. That will also be a public hearing for the budget, so that, that anyone has an opportunity to come in and speak in that public hearing and make their opinions known regarding the budget. That, our regular work session is at four thirty, that public hearing will be scheduled for five thirty. And will that be held in this room?
I think it's in the multi-
We'll, we'll certainly publicize those details. Typically, we have our, our work session in the multipurpose room.
So our meeting will start at five thirty, because ordinarily, our work session's at four o'clock, so it'll start here at five thirty?
That is correct. And then after the public hearing, then we will have an opportunity to conduct whatever business necessary that we normally would do in our work session, plus have additional discussions about the budget if, if we so choose. And then our, the, our vote on the budget will be at our regular meeting on June seventeen, I think, June seventeenth. We will also, we will not have another public hearing then, but we'll have our regular informal public comments. So folks will have an opportunity to speak their opinions about the budget before we vote on it at two, two meetings, to provide as much public input as possible.
I've got a couple of questions before we move on to another agenda item, if you're finished with the information you were giving.
Well, I think we have to, we just need a motion to set the public hearing at five thirty on June the third, two thousand twenty-four, here at the governmental center. And I will make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. As you said, we have just received this book as we come in here this evening, so obviously I haven't had an opportunity to dive into it, and I'm sure we all will in the next couple of weeks before our public hearing. I wanted to ask, Mike- I wanted to ask Mike Downs, the manager, about going back to one of your first comments I'd wrote, Down, that it was a reduce, a reduction in the tax rate, a 14-cent reduction tax rate. So, we're currently at 74, so your proposal would be to drop it at 60. But with the reevaluation, you said the revenue neutral rate would be, what was that?
52.5, 0.65.
Okay. And now, is that the true revenue neutral rate, or is that the adjusted with inflation rate? Because there's the true revenue neutral tax rate, and then the General Assembly gives us the option to add a-
Raj can answer that, of course.
That is the adjusted rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's adjusted for, I believe, about a 3.76%, which is the average of the previous years.
Okay. So, what is the true revenue neutral rate?
It's 50 point, I don't know, 50 point something is the rate, and then we added 3 points, I believe, 76% to that, and then brought it up to 52.65. I can get the exact one.
Okay. Yeah, if you could send that to us, I would just be interested to know. Okay. And so, also, Mike, you had mentioned-
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
In the budget book, in the supplemental section, there's a page that shows you the revenue neutral calculation.
Okay, perfect. Mike, you had mentioned at the beginning of your budget message that a home with 356,000 value, that they would pay 2138 with the 60-cent tax rate. So, what would they have been paying before this budget if?
We'd have to run that calculation again.
Okay. All right. Well, I've done a few calculations on my own, so, and actually picked, well, I'll go with this. I've got several scenarios here. So, this scenario is a retired couple that lives out towards Mount Pleasant, and their value last year was 221,000, and I'm going to just round the numbers, 221,000. So, their property tax bill was 1636 a year. Now, after the reevaluation, their property value went up to almost 400,000. Now, after an appeal, the value was set at 361,000. So, that has them paying 2170 at a 60-cent tax rate. So, they were paying 1636. With the new proposed budget, at a 60-cent tax rate, they're paying 2170. And so, that breaks down, 2170 a year, so that breaks down to an increase of $44 a month, and that's just $44 for the month. So, we have, and that's just a county taxpayer. Now, you know, a lot of people live in the municipalities, and theirs will increase as well. So, I want to make sure that I've got this clear. I know that at the beginning of your presentation, you said a reduction in the tax rate. However, this proposed budget, will taxpayers pay more or less than what they paid last year in the property tax bill?
They could potentially pay more, yes.
They, you said they will?
There will, there will be some that will pay more. Just some be, I referred to the rate.
Right.
The values are much higher.
Right.
So, therefore, the rate, that rate may still generate an increase in a tax bill.
Okay. But I would say that would probably be about a 90-something percent chance that everybody's going to pay.
If your tax rate went up by more than 23.33%, if your valuation went up by more than 23, almost 24%, then your taxes will go up.
Right, okay. So, another example I have was, I picked a $350,000 home, and with the average being a 60% increase in property values, that brought their value up to 560,000. Now, at the, what they were paying before this proposed budget was 2590 a year, $2,590 a year, with a 0.60 tax rate. So, it's a reduction in the tax rate, but because their valuation's higher, they're actually going to be paying 3360. So, that's an additional $770 a year that that property owner would be paying from the reevaluation and from the proposed manager's budget. So, I just want to make sure everyone's clear that, you know, whenever we talk about a reduced tax rate, that really equates to you had an increase in your property value, so you're going to pay more in taxes with this proposed budget. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure everyone understands that clearly, that increase. Also, in addition to that, that's just the property tax we're talking about, but whenever we add on homeowner's insurance, and we've all seen how the summer of this year, they're going to increase the rate. So, that's an additional thing to think about with the tax rate. And for anybody who, well, the group's already left, but anybody who is, you know, concerned about, you know, affordable housing, which we all are concerned about that, I'm concerned about it, you know, my grandparents concerned about it, I have people in, you know, my family and friends that are concerned about affordable housing as well. And anybody who is renting, for them to think that they're not paying property tax is absolutely not the case. So, as I went through those numbers and how people will pay hundreds, if not thousands of dollars more a year in property tax, that is passed along to the renter. So, if someone is budgeting, if the homeowner who was renting the home, if the landlord is budgeting and their property taxes go up by $80 a month, they're certainly going to pass that on to the renter. So, I just want, I just want folks to understand that. But I just wanted to go over some of those numbers.
Yep, no problem. I would, as you said, there will be some increases in tax bills, but the county itself, we collectively here are having an increase in the way to do business as well, so.
Did you mention that? Because I want to ask, so, does this budget include, we have natural growth throughout the year. So, whenever we set the budget, of course, something else gets built down the street, and we start collecting tax revenue on that increased tax. Is that included, like natural growth, is that included in this?
Yeah, we can get you that.
And how, and how much is that?
So, we have planned, besides what's happened with the revale, every year in our five-year plan, there's a 3% increase in property taxes.
Okay.
It's built into the budget.
And that's just from the natural growth?
Yes.
Okay. And while you're up here, let me ask you about the sales tax. I thought we had seen a projection where our sales tax revenue was declining at one point. I feel like I've seen that somewhere.
Initially, we were thinking, looking at about a 2% increase, but looking at the decline, the projected increase is 1%.
Okay. But it is certainly the, so four or five years ago, we were getting double what we had budgeted. Is that correct with?
Yeah, the trend was quite high, yeah, off the map, and that has tapered down to, I think this year, we're going to collect possibly a little bit more than what we had budgeted, but it's tapered considerably down.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Other questions or comments, commissioners?
As Commissioner Meesmer was doing, there's two weeks before the next meeting, there's plenty of time to make an appointment, come in. We will make ourselves available to you as well to answer any questions, concerns that you may have over the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We move now to reports, and first, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various other boards and/or committees. Does anyone have anything to report tonight?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, we spoke earlier about Memorial Day services, and the town of Midland is having one on the 27th at Rob Wallace Park at 7:00. Is that right, Rich?
Yes, correct.
At 7:00, and they've got a pretty good, detailed, nice program set up. So, if you don't have anything to do, that'd be a perfect place to go.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, I'll open the floor now for general comments by board members, if anyone has anything. Okay, hearing nothing, we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.